We're back in session. Welcome back, colleagues. Good morning. When we left off yesterday, we were in the second reading, and we were about to begin with Bill number 260-37COR. Senator Parkinson, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This time, we'd like to set aside this bill and exchange it with the third one, and just move on to the Castle Doctrine bill, ma'am. Make a motion.
Yes, so notwithstanding the rules, you'd like to switch the order of Bills number 39-37COR and Bill number 260-37 on the agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
On that motion, is there any objection? Is there any objection? Seeing no objection, motion carries. All right, we'll now be on Bill number 39-37COR. Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. At this time, I would like to add Bill number 39-37 seeks to reform the Castle Doctrine law to include curtilage outside areas of the home, and I would like to add that to the third reading and discuss.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Bill 39-37 seeks to reform Guam's Castle Doctrine law to include curtilage outside areas of a home that could be considered inhabited space for the purposes of the Castle Doctrine. This bill seeks to ameliorate a deficiency in the law pointed out by the Guam Supreme Court in 2016. In 2016, the Guam Supreme Court ruled in The People v. John -- a copy of the case has been submitted to the Speaker's office for the record -- that Guam's Castle Doctrine law did not extend to areas outside the home. The Castle Doctrine provides for the right to protect one's habitable property without a duty to retreat. However, the law also defined habitable property to specifically exclude yards or outdoor spaces surrounding the building itself. This was important in the Guam Supreme Court's analysis in The People v. John because the incident in question happened on a porch. As a porch was outside the habitable property, the Guam Supreme Court opined that Castle Doctrine did not apply. Castle Doctrine did not apply to a front porch. And I thought this presented a legal situation that put residents at a non-necessary legal When I introduced this bill, I said the defense of the castle begins at the moat, and that plays out in real life, too. Most intruders are not intercepted in the home itself but outdoors. Imagine this: you hear someone climbing over your fence in the middle of the night, or you hear them trying to get into the car in your driveway, or try to open your back door. Under the current law, if you confront the robber outdoors in any of these situations and get into an altercation, you do not have any Castle Doctrine protection, and you could be criminally liable for using excessive force. As the law is currently constructed, it leaves homeowners and residents in a precarious position. They would only have Castle Doctrine protections if they confront an intruder inside their home, but would not have Castle Doctrine protections if that confrontation happened on their porch, carport, outside kitchen, yard, or other space on their property. I don't know about you, but that doesn't make any sense to me. When a mother, father, or other protectors of a home confront a burglar in their own driveway, the law should be on the side of the protector and not the intruder. Bill 39-37 makes sure that the law remains on the side of the homeowner or resident defending their home and not the intruders invading their inhabited space. This bill was supported by both the Attorney General and the Public Defender's Office. This bill is common sense. The laws should be there to protect the citizens and not the intruders. I look forward to hearing the discussion of this bill from all my colleagues, and I humbly ask for the support to correct this deficiency in the law. With that, Madam Speaker, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Thank you. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? On the bill? Senator Duane, as you recognize, on the bill.
Sidhu Smasi, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I rise in support of the bill, and I know the author very well, Senator Ada, Tony Ada, the author of the original Castle Doctrine that was discussed earlier by the sponsor of the bill. Madam Speaker, I'm sure that he would be quite happy with this amendment, as the intention with the Castle Doctrine from its inception was the ability of individuals to protect life and property. And, Madam Speaker, I believe the amendment that's been placed here encompasses the real property of someone's castle. I can imagine, Madam Speaker, that there would be times when an individual is on their property and they're not within their residence, or they're not maybe on their porch or any properties surrounding their property, but they are out doing yard work, just came home from maybe going shopping or visiting family, or whatever other reason they would be away from their home. There are a lot of individuals, particularly nowadays, Madam Speaker, that take their personal safety very, very seriously, that they carry concealed weapon sometimes at all times, whether it be in a handbag, a purse, or on their person. Unfortunately, in the situation we live in on Guam, particularly with the meth epidemic, we have seen on our beautiful, serene, wonderful island that there are acts of violence that can result even to the worst possible outcome, which is a taking of one's life. We face that possibility and probability, of course, outside of the confines of our property, but I can't imagine a place that you should be more safe than your home, your castle, the place where you more than likely have children. We know on our island, Madam Speaker, that we are an island that has multiple generations, oftentimes in the majority of our homes, a nona, a tata, an auntie, an uncle, maybe not just siblings, but cousins and other relatives who stay with us. We have a lot of times, Madam Speaker, those who are infirm, who are under care in our homes. They deserve the dignity and the safety of their castle. They deserve to have the ability to protect themselves, and that protection, in my opinion, Madam Speaker, should extend to the entire meets and bounds of one's property in order to be able to secure your safety for your family and realize the true comfort and security of what is known to be your castle. So, Madam Speaker, for that purpose, I rise in support of this amendment, and I do believe that, as the sponsor mentioned, that the accompanying case that was decided, you know, urged us to be able to have a proper definition for the meets, bounds, and boundaries of one's castle, to include outside of the physical structure. Sidhu Smasi, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to share some of my thoughts on 39-37.
Sidhu Smasi, Senator, on the bill. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Munia Barnes, Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Manana Sidhuus, Madam Speaker, thank you for giving me the opportunity to rise and speak about this measure as authored by the good Senator from MTM, Senator Parkinson. Madam Speaker, as I consider this measure and how it would be applied in the real world, I am hoping that the author can answer some questions if he would yield.
Please state your questions.
Okay, thank you, Madam Speaker. The bill says that the Castle Doctrine will not consider yards or surrounding outdoor spaces as habitable property unless it is when used in reference to a habitable property. According to the measure, habitable property includes businesses, residences, vehicles, and houseboats. My first question, Madam Speaker, is, is it the intent of the author and/or this bill to allow the use of lethal force when one is in the surrounding outdoor spaces of their car or business? As a specific example, if I'm shopping at a supermarket and a purse snatcher approaches me as I am walking to my car, would this bill allow me to use lethal force without a duty to retreat?
Will the sponsor yield to the question?
Yes, I do yield to the question, and it is the intent of this bill that there is no duty to retreat.
Okay, thank you. Would the same protections be offered to an employee locking up a mom or pop store late at night? Does this protection apply only to the owners of the businesses? Or are workers at businesses considered people who, as the law requires, have beneficial control and use of those buildings?
I will yield to that question. I am not a lawyer, so this is not legal advice, but I would think that this would be a question to be settled by the courts. But my interpretation of it would be that the employees are acting as lawful agents of the owner, and so the Castle Doctrine protections would extend to the employees.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Speaker, I'm gonna say my final question. The bill defines curtilage as the area immediately surrounding a residence that is necessary, convenient, and habitually used for family purposes and for those activities associated with the sanctity of a person's home. Besides the two examples listed in this measure, an outdoor kitchen or a bathroom, can the author, for the benefit of the public, list other places outside one's home that would qualify under this bill?
Are you asking the sponsor to--
Yes, yes, I am.
--to sponsor you?
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you please repeat the question?
Okay. The bill defines curtilage as the area immediately surrounding a residence that is necessary, convenient, and habitually used for family purposes and for those activities associated with the sanctity of a person's home. Besides the two examples listed in the measure, an outdoor kitchen or outdoor bathroom, can the author, for the benefit of the public, list other places outside one's home that would qualify under this bill?
Yes, I'll yield to that question. I mean, it really goes as far as your imagination, your front yard, your driveway, your arts and crafts work shed, your in-laws' residence attachment, a shed that you like to work at, your man cave, your personal bar, your billiards room, your special gumbo recipe kitchen, your model train museum. I mean, we could go on and on forever, but really, we try to make this as broad as possible because we cannot legislate for every possible corner case, because, you know, what if we said, oh, well, we forgot to put in model -- we had the model train rooms, but we forgot to put the Hanukkah rooms, but, you know, so we do what we can, and we keep it broad. Hope that answers your question, ma'am.
Yes, and, you know, Madam Speaker, and to the author of this legislation, I just want to share, you know, we've seen homeowners in viral videos use force to defend themselves on their yards, and I'm sure patios, lanais, and tented areas are also common places for criminals to target. So while this may be repeating some information already shared, I want to ensure a clear and legislative record on this matter, so I was hoping to work closely with the author to hear his perspective and his intent to this matter so that the public can hear the intent of this measure. So I guess just that perspective, Madam Speaker. And if the good author wants to add anything to my last comments, he's more than welcome to do that.
Yes, I'll yield to that. Really, what we're trying to do is simplify things for the courts and simplify things for the homeowners and residents as well. We do not want the homeowners having to second-guess themselves about their legal liability in a home intruder situation when fractions of a second matter. Fractions of a second can matter in a life-or-death situation, and we do not want them second-guessing themselves on the legal ground, and if they do exercise their right to defend themselves, we want to make sure that the law serves them for doing the right thing. And so I hope that better clarifies my intent, ma'am. Thank you for the question.
Thank you very much, Senator and Madam Speaker. Those are all the questions I have for the good author from MTM, and I just, again, there are a lot of people in our community that are looking at this measure. There's already been some examples that have been before us in this community, and I think that this legislation is key and important to a lot of those that have had or have known of immediate family members who've gone through some of the, I want to say, the atrocities or the bad stuff that has happened to them, and this bill, again, is something that continues from the original intent of the first bill that was passed into law, so I will continue to listen to all the other comments from our colleagues and hope to gather a positive resolution for this matter. Sidhu Smasi.
Sidhu Smasi. On the bills, or anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Fisher, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you very much, ma'am. As you are aware, Madam Speaker, under 7.112 of the relevant chapter and title, a presumption arises in certain events. A person is presumed to have held a reasonable fear of imminent death or serious bodily injury to himself or another, et cetera and so forth. So this presumption arises, the person doesn't have the victim, I think we can use that phrase, the victim has no duty to verify the presumption, rather, the presumption arises and can be exploited. The reason I bring up this presumption is because I can envision a situation under the bill as amended, or under the bill, rather, I can envision a situation in which mere trespasser on a piece of property, say you've got 10 acres or something in Gigo, and a mere trespasser comes across the property line and is now present on the property yet objectively presents no danger to the homeowner, the victim. Yet, because the presumption has arisen, the homeowner would be justified to shoot that individual, though they present no threat, though they are hundreds of yards away from what is traditionally known as the curtilage. That is bothersome. I can see teenage trespassers getting shot. I can see intoxicated individuals getting shot. I can see any number of harmless actors being destroyed under the bill. So I have a question, Madam Speaker, for the author, and it is simply this: to what extent, if any, is curtilage the outer limits of a curtilage defined?
Will the sponsor of the bill yield to the question?
I would be willing to yield to that question if I could just get a moment's recess to clarify the answer.
All right, we'll take a one-minute recess.
Thank you very much, Senator and Madam Speaker. Those are all the questions I have for the good author from MTM. And I just, again, there are a lot of people in our community that is looking at this measure. There's already been some examples that have been before us in this community. And I think that this legislation is key and important to a lot of those that have had or have known of immediate family members who've gone through some of the, 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 I want to say, the atrocities or the bad stuff that has happened to them. And this bill, again, is something that continues from the original intent of the first bill that was passed into law. So I will continue to listen to all the other comments from our colleagues and hope to gather a positive resolution for this matter. Sizos Masi.
Sizos Masi. On the bills, or anyone else would like to speak on the bill? Senator Fisher, you recognize on the bill?
Thank you very much, ma'am. As you are aware, Madam Speaker, under 7.112 of the relevant chapter and title, a presumption arises in certain events. A person is presumed to have held a reasonable fear of imminent death or serious bodily injury to himself or another, et cetera and so forth. So this presumption arises, the person doesn't have, the victim, I think we can use that phrase, the victim has no duty to verify the presumption, rather, the presumption arises and can be exploited. The reason I bring up this presumption is because I can envision a situation under the bill as amended, or under the bill, rather, I can envision a situation in which
We're back from recess. Senator Fisher, you had the floor. You had asked the sponsor to yield. Would you repeat your question?
I'll withdraw the question. I do have an amendment to add, though.
All right.
And it has been...
I'm sorry, FCO has been...
It has been passed out to my colleagues on the floor. And I apologize for the delay in the contemplation here. I think you may recall, Madam Speaker, that I was voicing some concern about the extent to which a person may invoke the Castle Doctrine. And we had talked about, you know, essentially the innocent, if there is such a thing, an innocent trespasser getting shot. So by this amendment, which I've offered, which is to line for page one, I guess, I'm trying to tighten up the requirements of 7.112A. I know it'll be difficult without that open in front of you to necessarily track. But under 7.112, the Castle Doctrine, sub A, a presumption arises that you can use deadly force against an individual if that person against whom you're going to shoot was in the process of unlawfully and forcefully entering, or if the person had removed or was attempting to remove another against another person's will, et cetera, and the person who uses the defensive force knew or had reason to believe that unlawful and forcible entry, or unlawful and, or an unlawful and forcible act was occurring or had occurred. We're talking about entry into the curtilage. And because curtilage is so expansive under the bill, I was trying to find a way to avoid the problem of innocent parties being shot by a person inadvertently or inadvertently, I suppose, trying to invoke the Castle Doctrine. So what this says is, provided that the property is enclosed, if you've got a fence around your property, I think that that is reasonable notice to a trespasser or an interloper, that there's private property they are entering upon and they are noticed by virtue of the fence, or the otherwise enclosure, or absent the enclosure, that reasonable notice be placed upon the property. No trespassing. This is private property, that sort of thing. The point of it is to provide some sort of notice to the individual who is now in danger of being shot because they are trespassing or forcibly entering. The entire purpose of this is to avoid, again, as I said, it's to avoid, you know, this, a real problem of parties being shot essentially accidentally. They, you know, they stumbled into the property, et cetera. So I just offer that for my colleagues' consideration. Thank you very much, ma'am.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone that'd like to speak on the amendment? Senator Parkinson?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I rise and supported the amendment. And I thank my colleague, my friend from EPAN, for bringing this concern up and helping and working together to find a solution. You know, as a stringent and strong advocate for the Second Amendment and a person's ability to defend themselves, I do recognize that there are limits in the, in the, in the concern of public safety. And this bill in no way is, you know, trying to put people who innocently trespass because they stumbled loss onto somebody's property in danger. This is mainly to protect individuals protecting their property from people who are knowingly someplace they're not supposed to be. And I believe that this amendment goes a long way towards clarifying that, as well as codifying that and strengthening the bill overall. So thank you again to my good friend. And I look forward to further discussion on this bill. And I fully support this amendment. Thank you. And I yield the rest of my time. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. On the amendment, Senator Sinagastin, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, I support the bill. Let's start with that. Even though it's down scaled from my bill, the stand your ground. My concern for the author of the amendment is that property is enclosed. Break. You've got a fence, that's enclosed. Reasonable notice, the boundaries, no trespassing. What if the individual puts up all the signs? Then the thief, to make the excuse, removes the signs. What do you do? We make the excuse that it's because it's, it's enclosed? The signs were taken down? What do you do next? Do we say, don't shoot? I say, shoot. You enter my property, I say, shoot. You shouldn't have been there to begin with. You know, everyone knows the boundaries. The thieves know the boundaries, but they don't care because their intent is to steal. Their intent is to hurt. And the people of Guam are reaching a point where they're actually quite tired of that. And I'm just concerned that if, if all these, these signs are put up and then they're removed for the purpose of stealing or hurting somebody, then what good is that? I'm just, I'm just very concerned is that maybe the author can clarify that more because for me, I don't need to put up no sign. You enter my property and you see me. If you don't run, that means you're free game. For me, as being a prior military, the firing line is open. And I believe that for everyone. And also as a former police officer, okay? As a former police officer, if, if, if your intent is to hurt someone in that property, it doesn't matter if you put the signs or not. Your intent is quite clear. There's reasonable, you know, cause to, to determine that you have full intent of just hurting or stealing, depriving the individual of his property. But I'm just concerned is that if the signs are not there. But I, I'm going to support it. But I'm just, just concerned that we talk all about, all of this. And my bill I introduced twice, if not three times. I know the author of the bill asked me about his bill. And I said, I'm, I'm, I'll support your bill. I just wish the committee had put it out on the floor, like it should have, like this bill was being done. Then we decide from there. So I won't have to bring it up no more. But with that, I'd just like the author to maybe explain that a little bit more to me. Thank you. That is the question. If the signs are gone, what do you do?
Will the sponsor yield to the question?
That would certainly be a proof problem. If you tried to raise the Castle Doctrine in court because you shot somebody, and you would say, "Hey, Judge, I did put up signs. Somebody stole them. Judge believes you put up the sign, you'll be fine." I appreciate-- I appreciate-- I think what I'm hearing in the question is a resentment, I think, by a citizen that the burden, they have to all of a sudden put up signs and so forth. And maybe they don't want to do that. But the concern is the phenomenon-- the aspect of, you know, innocent teenage boys going after pigs or something and, you know, traveling across property. And then I got a, you know, cranky old dude with a rifle, and he takes pot shots at them. And I'd want that-- I'd want to prevent that in some way. And I think we can do it. By tightening up this bill, I don't know if I answered your question, Senator Joe.
Senator Sinagastin.
For me, it bothers me that we're putting the burden now on the property owner. Enclose your property. Hmm. Think it's cheap? No, it's not. Reasonable notice? Is it cheap? No, it's not. Everybody knows their boundaries. And that's my concern, is that we're just-- we're just adding more burden to the property owner, to the victim, the expected victim. And how much more do we need? I mean, I'm ready to support wherever we can take care of the police department or whatever, but I'm just concerned about that. Thank you.
Sorry. On the bill-- no, on the Fisher amendment, Senator-- Vice Speaker, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I have no objection to this bill. The--
The amendment.
I mean, the amendment. The Section 3, that is, provided that the property is enclosed or reasonable notice is placed upon the boundaries of the curtilage, that the property or residence is a no trespassing zone. So my question is, how many signs are needed to show? Because if the house is-- or, or the-- the owner's place is within a quarter acre lot or half an acre lot, what if it's a big, like a ranch area or some, some areas here in Guam where the property is rather large? Is there-- is-- should there be a requirement of how many signs should be put up within the area? So that-- so that everybody in the surrounding area or anyone who's going to, to try and trespass-- I mean, at least they, they know that the signage is there. You put one in the front and one in the back? Or is-- I may, maybe ask the author. I mean, is it-- is his intent for this is just to put up one sign on the property or to put up many signs?
Will the sponsor yield?
I will. And thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much for that question. And that is an excellent question. Reasonable notice. And no one has ever been able to define what reasonable is. It's, you know, it's like pornography. I know it when I see it, right? It's an argument that would have to be made to a judge in defense that this was reasonable notice. I can see a situation where reasonable notice would be one sign where a property-- a piece of property maybe is enclosed by, you know, laderas, and there is only one entryway to the property. I think that that might be-- one sign might be reasonable. But if I have 10 acres with multiple entry points, maybe I need to place notice on each of the entry points. I think, again, because we're, but we're talking about the raising of a defense-- in defense of a criminal accusation, I think it's a question the judge would have to decide, or jury, whether or not it was reasonable, your notification. If the jury says it wasn't reasonable, then you cannot raise the Castle Doctrine as a defense.
Madam Speaker, if I may-- maybe that was my point of contention here is-- the signage and, and making sure that we show that, that there is definitely a no trespassing sign, whether it be at all points of entry, that could be considered. And again, I don't want to belabor this presentation, but--
I, I certainly don't disagree.
Maybe an amendment to the fact that reasonable notice is placed or at-- upon the points of entry, something to that effect? I mean, if there's multiple points of entry, if there's a front yard, a backyard, the side yard, how would that work? So if I can just have a moment's recess, I'll confer-- I'll confirm with legal, just to see. Please?
One minute recess. We're back from recess. Vice Speaker, you had the floor.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. After conferring with the author of the amendment and with legal, Madam Speaker, I, I'm going to go ahead and leave the amendment as is and not add anything to it because I'm hoping-- I'm hopeful that the, the amendment as provided that the property is enclosed or reasonable notice is placed, that, that, that should be-- that, that should suffice on, on the word reasonable. And my take was, you know, at the different points of entry, if you put a-- if signage is up, then, then you know that the intent is there, that this is private property. No trespassing. So I'm, I'm going to leave it alone. And then hopefully see if the good author of the legislation might, might look at this further. But thank you, Madam Speaker, for giving me the time to speak on this amendment. I have no objection to this amendment. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey. On the amendment, Senator Nicholas, you're recognized.
Good morning, Madam Speaker. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, people of Guam. I support this amendment. I support the bill. The worst that can happen here is we turn the island into the Wild, Wild West. Or we can-- you know, I heard this during COVID all the time-- we act with an abundance of caution. And Senator Fisher's amendment allows that we don't turn this place into the Wild, Wild West. And so I don't know what it is about Senator Fisher. He's just a really wonderful guy. But I support the amendment, and I think it's a good amendment. It's a wonderful compromise. And I think moving forward makes the bill better. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
On the amendment, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the amendment? Senator Lujan, you're recognized on the amendment.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I support the amendment as well. But, you know, the enclosed property-- you know, most folks who maybe live out, maybe beyond, maybe subdivisions, have bigger tracts of land, they manicure their, their yards and pretty much their surrounding-- or their property, property line is pretty much manicured. Now, enclosure, as a previous speaker had said, you know, it's, it's pretty costly to fence up your yard. A lot of times, it's just the vegetation that's around there that's their, their fence line, basically, you know? And when you say reasonable notice, does it have to be written reasonable notice? I mean, if, if I, if I see somebody coming in my property, I'm going to say, "You have 10 seconds. Get out of here." You know? That, that's reasonable. That's reasonable. So it, so it doesn't have to be written notice, then? It's got to be reasonable. And I think most people are reasonable. I mean, before, they would take lethal action. I think they would, they would say, "Hey, look, I'm giving you-- get out of here. I've got a dog," or "I'm going to let my dog loose," or "I've got a gun on you." And I, you know, and I, I think that's-- that's my definition of, of reasonable notice. Doesn't have to be necessarily a written notice. Something reasonable, which most people do anyway. Most people do anyway. So that being, that being said, no, we live, we live in a crazy world now. And I know that, you know, sales of arms have gone up just because of crazy things happening. The rampant use of drugs and, you know, again, what we're hearing is like a lot of the drugs now are laced with, unfortunately, fentanyl. It has arrived in our shores. Things are get-- I mean, not things are getting. I mean, they're already getting very crazy. That being said, I, I support the bill. And I just want, just want it. And I got that answer in regards to reasonable notice. And it doesn't have to be a written notice, but a verbal notice is reasonable, which most people do anyway right now before taking any type of action, you know, lethal or not, with supposedly intruders or people with, with ill intent. With that, Madam Speaker, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Sisus Massey. On the amendment, Senator Dwayne, you're recognized.
Sisus Massey, Madam Speaker. And I want to thank Senator Fisher for the amendment. And I think it's appropriate. You know, the one thing about this amendment, Madam Speaker, I think it takes care of both sides because it kind of reinforces that really the action of, you know, using force to protect your property as the author of the bill says now, the moat. But it also heightens a sense of responsibility. Okay. You know, I, I, I may have a larger piece of property. I may, you know, live on an acre or two acres and do some farming, and I'm trying to protect my area. But the thing is, is that I'll mark my area clear. And, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll have to think about what is my imminent danger. I think when you're in, you know, urban development in Sunohanya and you have a 720 square foot property and you're contiguous to other properties, I think it's pretty obvious, you know, when someone's coming at you with ill intent, armed or armed to create harm to maybe yourself or your family. But I can see a situation whereby some of these larger properties, you know, the individual has to consider, you know, is this a threat to me? Can I call the police? Can I use video footage to, you know, take care of this individual who might be trying to, you know, steal my, my crops or something like that? You know, I, I can see that reasonableness to say, "Hey, look, yeah, of course, I'm upset, and this shouldn't be happening." But I think that, you know, the imminent danger is to my income. The imminent danger is to, you know, maybe some destruction of my property. But, but yet, it's not a life or death perception situation where I think that somebody may be trying to overcome me. And whatever happens, it may mean that I meet my maker. So I think this is very reasonable. And I think it's to take into consideration those instances where properties are not, you know, a typical size of a subdivision type of area or the like, as we know, exist in many of our northern villages in particular. But we know that a lot of our central and southern villagers, you know, they, they farm. They, they have larger properties. And so I think this is a very reasonable amendment. And I think, you know, also, Madam Speaker, we're really dealing with, I think, by and large, if not across the board, gun owners-- trained gun owners are individuals who, who really take it serious in terms of when they're going to use force. You know, particularly those who have concealed carry in other situations. You know, they're not, they're not sitting out there just, you know, trying to do target practice. They really want to make sure that they're taking care of their family. So I think even in this instance, you know, somebody is going to say, "Okay, the law is this. You know, my, my, my property is large. I'm going to post those things." So it's clear. No question about it. You trespass across here, you know, I can ascertain that you've got an ill intent, then something's going to happen. That's, that protects the landowner, and that protects the individual from knowing when you enter that property, there's going-- there may be some consequences. So I want to thank the author for the amendment. And I think this makes the bill much stronger. Sisus Massey.
Sisus Massey. On the amendment, Senator Burnett, on the amendment.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I, I just wonder here if-- because according to the bill, the definition of curtilage is the area immediately surrounding a residence that is necessary, convenient, and habitually used for family purposes and for those activities associated with the sanctity of a person's home. Which is, to me, it's a little bit of a, kind of a gray definition. It doesn't, you know, there's no black and white. It's not, you know, 10 feet from the window or five feet from here. But I'm kind of getting the thought-- and I don't know if the author of the amendment can maybe clarify-- just based on even what the retiring speaker has said. Are we now, through this amendment, extending the curtilage to the-- I mean, even though the amendment reads, "Reasonable notice is placed upon the boundaries of the curtilage," which again is defined as the area immediately surrounding a residence that is necessary, convenient, and habitually used for family purposes and for those activities associated with the sanctity of a person's home? Or are we now saying that you put the no trespassing on the property boundary? And as the previous speaker had said and alluded to properties where people farm? And I'm just wondering if, if as a property owner, I put-- if, as a property owner, I put that no trespassing sign on the border of my property, which, and then on the discussion, someone had thrown in on number 10 acres, right? Does that then mean that I have no duty to retreat on the whole property because I put up the sign? Or are we saying that you have to put the sign on the boundary of the curtilage, which is again defined as the property immediately surrounding the house? I just wonder, ma'am, because the profferer of the amendment had stated his concern on the record, that he was worried about accidental trespassers. I know when we see a lot of these surveillance videos, and we're talking about young boys, a lot of teenagers who are out here up to no good. And I guess to me, it seems like putting up a sign alleviates us of that risk. I'm not sure that it does, ma'am. So, I'm not sure if that's a question or more just an observation on what the amendment does, but if the author would yield to that, ma'am?
Would the sponsor yield?
Yes, ma'am. If I could ask my friend to kind of drill down a little bit on that question and phrase the precise question you want answered?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yes, so I guess my question is, if curtilage is defined as the area immediately surrounding a residence that is necessary, will the property owner be required to place the signs on the boundary of the property, and would that then make the entire property part of the quote-unquote "curtilage"?
Thank you very much. I think the first answer to that would be, is it reasonable? If it's reasonable, you can raise the defense. If it's not reasonable, you can't raise the defense. But he does bring up a good point. The definition of residence in the bill says residence means a habitable property, comma, to include the curtilage, et cetera and so forth. So it is habitable property which also includes the curtilage. And curtilage means the area immediately surrounding a residence that is necessary, convenient, and habitually used for family purposes or for those activities, et cetera and so forth. I don't know what, I have an idea what immediate means, but I have an idea that to the extent I am using the property conveniently and habitually for family purposes, I think that the curtilage would stretch all the way out to the meets and bounds. And I think that the original purpose of the bill was to extend the defensive perimeter, for want of a better term. The defensive perimeter, and as the gentleman observed, I worry very much about the, for want of a better term, the innocent interloper who finds himself or herself, unfortunately, on a property without notice. They would have notice if, as Senator Jesse said, you know, I stick my head out the window and said, "Hey, get the hell off my property." I think that's reasonable notice. I also think it's reasonable notice if you put a sign up. But the question of whether or not it's reasonable is, it's for the jury, and whether or not they want to agree with that. You know, that's a valid point, well taken. But I guess I just retreat to say, is it reasonable notice? Thank you.
If I could, because I was mentioned as well, yeah. If I could, if you would yield, I was mentioned as well. I just wanted to clarify my point, because he said the retiring speaker as well. Are you okay with that, Senator? So I wanted to make it clear, so that's not misunderstood, what I was saying. Yes, there's larger properties with overall larger, but I still, I was, well, my point was, was that it's not typical like in a subdivision of urban development, meaning that you have a house on larger properties. But I do believe, as the author of the amendment just stated, and the bill states, the curtilage is the reasonable property around the home. But it's just the fact that when you're in other areas where you have homes that are, you know, 1,000 feet apart, in areas such as that, we know that in Malolu and in Iran and a lot of the other southern villages other than those areas, it is, you know, so my point was not to say that the curtilage necessarily is out to the meets and bounds, but it was, it would be in, I mean, out to the, yeah, they extended all the way out, but it would be what is defined. And also, I do agree with the author of the amendment that there is an expectation of reasonableness to this, that's expected in the law. So I want to be clear that I'm still saying the curtilage is as defined in the bill. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Senator Barnett, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you to the author and the retiring speaker for the clarification. I just, you know, I just worry. I understand, nobody feels safe anymore. We don't have enough police officers on the street. The scourge of crystal methamphetamine is, it's unchecked. I mean, and it causes, in long-term users, a psychosis that is often mistaken for mental illness. So I get that we want to be safe, and all of this crime has really ramped people up to the point where, I mean, just some of the comments on the floor that were made, "If you're on my property, I'm gonna shoot," that doesn't sound reasonable to me. And I just worry about the extension of the curtilage, and I just think of scenarios where, you know, you have someone on the edge of someone's property stealing breadfruit, for example. Does that deserve a death sentence? I'm not sure that it does. But again, I do understand everyone's need to protect their property. But I think that if we pass this bill, it's gonna leave a lot of discretion up to the courts, because again, just based on the definition of curtilage, I'm not sure that it extends, you know, outwards of 10 acres from the area immediately surrounding the home. But that's all. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator. On the amendment, is there anyone else who would like to speak on the amendment? Senator Perez, you're recognized. No? All right. On the amendment, anyone else? If not, then the sponsor may close on the amendment.
Thank you very much. You know, the amendment is designed to alleviate, I think, a real worry, but the hesitation that has been expressed on the floor here also demonstrates a real worry. We are just, we just hope, we hope to avoid tragedy of innocent deaths and young people stealing breadfruit, that sort of thing. Does that deserve the death penalty? No. But does a person have a right to keep their home safe when a criminal comes, you know, surging through the door or through the window? Yes, of course. Take a shot. But there is a, there's an unbridgeable gray area here. And I think that when we say, use a word like reasonable, especially when we come to criminal defenses, the very nature of the business is we have to leave it up to 12 people in the community to decide whether or not our actions were reasonable. And anyway, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Senator, on the amendment, is there an objection to the amendment? If not, amendment passes. On the bill, Senator Fisher, you still have the floor on the bill?
Thank you very much, ma'am. I do support the bill. That's all.
On the bills, is there anyone else who'd like to be recognized on the bill? Senators Nicholas, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I support the bill. I think if anybody came onto your property and acted maliciously, and it rose to self-defense, you shouldn't retreat from your, from any part of the premises of your property. Last night, I was reading about Hammurabi, and, you know, it's an ancient king, you know, passing laws about an eye for an eye. And toward the end of what I was reading, it said that he was the lawgiver, and he wanted to improve the lives of his subjects. And although I approached this, this measure, you know, with much more understanding of what we really want to do here, is we really want to protect the innocent and the people who may be wrong in a certain way. If somebody were to come into your property, I won't want to retreat. When I was in the army, we deployed, and we were getting ready to deploy, I was in the infantry, and we had a lot of free time when you're in the infantry. And I mentioned to one of the NCOs, I said, "You know, Sarge, why don't we, with this free time, why don't we go down and help them fix the Humvees?" He said, "Duane, what is your MOS?" And I said, "11B, 11 Bravo." He goes, "You know, we don't go down there and fix Humvees. Your only job in the army is to get up close and destroy the enemy." And so while we weren't out on the range, you know, that was our sole purpose. But in my training, and this is something I pray to God, one of the skills I never use, and I always prayed to God when I was deployed, I said, "You know, please don't let me hurt anybody. But if I should, if it came down to it, if it meant saving my life and the life of my fellow soldiers, make me be swift and accurate." And I mentioned earlier, I didn't want to turn the island into the Wild Wild West, but there are provisions in this bill with Senator Fisher's amendment, it makes it good, the giver of law, to improve people's lives and protect lives, give you the opportunity to protect yourself. And should it come down to it, and it rises to the level of self-defense, I ask the Lord to make you as swift and accurate as possible as well. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Sisus Massey. On the bill, on the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? Senator Perez, you're recognized on the bill.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. So I take a different perspective of this bill, and it has to be rooted in previous testimonies from other stand-your-ground bills, as well as testimony from Attorney Generals, current and past. And so if I like to quote some of the comments, so according to Attorney General Douglas Moreland, so according to the committee report, it states that, where is that? You know, he supports the right to defend themselves, for everyone to defend themselves. However cautioned, the legislature should be cautious of how this legislation could shield a property owner who goes too far in what would be deemed the outside area of his house or business. And so, in addition to other Attorney Generals, so if I can read some of the testimonies regarding stand-your-ground, expanding this castle doctrine, and this is in regards to Bill 12-36, in which they were trying to remove the self-defense part of it, which this bill also does. So the duty to retreat when possible lies at the intersection of the castle doctrine and self-defense laws. As a community, we have long recognized that there are few inherently special places where we expect minimal disruption of our comfort, privacy, safety, such as our homes, vehicles, and places of work, also known as castles. And these places are deserving of an increased level of protection when defending them. So last, according to the Journal American Medical Association, they released a study entitled, "Analysis of Stand Your Ground Self-Defense Laws and Statewide Rates of Homicides and Firearms Homicides," which concluded the following. "The staggered adoption of stand-your-ground laws in the U.S. states was associated with increases in homicide and firearm homicide rates across the United States. And these increases reached 10% and higher in several southern states, while no states had significant reductions in violent deaths, as advocates often argue when justifying these laws. The accumulation of evidence established in this and other studies point to harmful outcomes associated with stand-your-ground laws. Despite this, stand-your-ground laws have now been enacted in most states, and the uptake of new bills continues to be popular, unnecessarily risking lives." And so that is another Attorney General. And in the 34th Guam Legislature, there was another bill similar to, you know, in regards to removing self-defense. And basically, it states that, it's just the, again, it reiterates that comment, that there appears to be increased risks of homicides and disparate application to individuals claiming self-defense. However, this has been disputed in a separate statistical study from the RAN Corporation. So there's a lot of evidence out there that disputes the intent of what stand-your-ground aims to protect, especially when removing the self-defense requirement. And so I'm really concerned about this bill, particularly in the section where, in page four. And I think this is really, it would make it difficult, and there'll be unintended consequences, I believe, because we've had a testimony provided, too, as well, from families who were unwitting victims of this, of the stand-your-ground law. In particular, I recall a mother in which the friend was shot by another friend, and so this friend was always at the house, and, you know, they were welcomed as part of the family, but something happened and it ended up in his death. And so I think we need to be cautious with this particular, especially particular, when we're trying to expand these laws, in regards to, you know, are the outcomes really what we are saying it will do? And we already have evidence that it does not from studies, from our own local experience. And the concern I have is this section E, so it's the part of, I'm sorry, section three of the bill would add a new subsection E, and I think this is highly problematic. It states, "In a criminal prosecution, once a prima facie claim of self-defense immunity from criminal prosecution has been raised by the defendant at a pretrial immunity hearing, the burden of proof by clear and convincing evidence is on the party seeking to overcome the immunity." I think this is problematic, and it would work against really, you know, what is justice in our community. And we do have the courts to determine and adjudicate situations, deaths, you know, is it, was it done, how did the death occur, how did the murders occur, right? So, you know, was it truly self-defense, or was it for another reason? I think this section is gonna make it harder for courts to really adjudicate properly. So I do raise concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. On the bill, is there anyone else who'd like to speak
On the main motion, Speaker Tchelai, I will recognize you at this time.
Sisus Massey. The bill, I think, has several issues that we are presented with here as a legislature. First of all, there is no committee report. It has been routed. It did not receive enough votes to get out of the committee. The bill, therefore, we are in here deliberating on a bill where unless you attended the hearing or received the copy somewhere else, only two people attended the hearing. Only two people heard the testimony on this bill, Senator Canata, Senator Barnett, and myself. None of the testimony is in front of us because the committee None of the testimony is in front of us because the committee report is still pending votes. I don't think it's a good practice for us to vote in the dark like that, particularly on something like this, where we have had a lot of questions amongst ourselves on the words that are used, whether they are precise enough, whether they are broadening this bill beyond the imagination of those who came to testify, who included the Attorney General and the public defender. And as my previous, this previous speaker, my colleague, pointed out, the Attorney General never said, I support this bill, contrary to what this, the author said. He said he had some concerns. Of course, he said he's a strong advocate of defending the right to defend themselves, defending homes, families, and guests have a right to stand their ground against criminals, but he said, we need to consider carefully examples of how this legislation could shield a property owner who goes too far in what will be deemed the area outside his house or business, the curtilage. And that word, curtilage, seems to have no bounds. It just has to be a place immediately surrounding a residence. Necessary, convenient, habitually used for purposes associated with the sanctity of a person's home. One of the intents of this bill was to clarify the case where the court, it wasn't, it didn't even need clarification. The court was very clear. They interpreted the intent of the legislature to exclude porches from the castle doctrine, when the castle doctrine was enacted by previous legislatures. They specifically excluded porches, yards, houseboats. Or I don't know about the houseboats, but they specifically included those things. This bill does the reverse. And so while the court said, according to the law, castle doctrine does not include a porch. So if we are going to include a porch, that's one thing. But if we're going to include the boonies surrounding my house, all the way for acres, because somebody, like one of my colleagues said, is out there doing something like maybe picking mango. We don't know. That's, that's the issue. That's where we're trying to balance things here. Yes, protect your family. But some people who have called my office because they've been told I'm holding the bill, blah, 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 they said, we want to shoot people who come on our yards. Wherever this is practiced, the findings are racial discrimination. We have, we have our own cases here where young teenagers shot in the boonies. So I would just want to point out also the public defender. He did, was represented by John Morrison that day, the deputy, and he said, I find these modifications to the doctrine make sense and I have an agreement with them. And he talks about how he would define curtilage. That are generally, someone would have an expectation of privacy. He says that, that's recognized in some jurisdictions. He says, these are usually areas that are very close, adjacent to the home. Modifications use that term and also set out that the areas would be commonly used, associated with sanctity of persons homes. We're dealing, so he says, so we're dealing with areas like an outside kitchen, an outside bathroom. In my view, if we were way down the driveway, this law is probably not going to cover it, but not from our discussions here. The court's going to look at our discussions here and say, oh, no, they intended to go way as far as your property extends. So that's what I'm saying. The danger is one person is supporting the bill because they're interpreting it one way. We are in here supporting or not supporting the bill because the words are not that well defined. If we wanted to include porch, because that one case, the death occurred on a porch and the person did not have the castle doctrine defense, but he still had self-defense, defense. And that's the key to me. If this bill is not passed, it doesn't hurt anybody's gun rights. It doesn't, you can still carry your gun. You can still shoot whatever you want. But you, you have to prove self-defense if you shoot a person to death who is not entering your home. That's the law right now. And I find that very reasonable, where we have people. We can defend our families in our homes. I don't think we should change that law and allow it so anyone can shoot anyone in their yards. We've just seen it too many times. In fact, in the case that we're talking about, there was part of the theory of the other person's case was that they were invited over. But what happens if we pass this bill is it takes away and it shifts for the courts and it mandates that they cannot inquire whether your fear of death or your self-defense was reasonable. They cannot. They can only determine whether you were in the bounds as defined by our bill here. And if you were, the presumption is that you were acting in self-defense and it flips that. We've seen other cases, for example, the family of Piolo, Officer Piolo. It's in every case, very hard. There's always going to be two sides. And I say, I'm, no one here should interfere with a person's right to protect your home. But I just think from the discussion today, we are getting a little bit carried away saying, use your imagination. It's wherever your imagination can carry you. That's the bounds of your curtilage. Or I'm going to shoot them because they entered my property and I put a sign. Whereas right now, the laws are that you use self, you use force to kill when you are under threat. So I just think that we should be a little bit more precise with our language if we are going to include things like porches, outside kitchens. I have no problem with that. Those are on Guam. Parts of our home. In some jurisdictions, they use the words attached or detached, but I don't even think we need to use that in this case, but we, we should be a little bit more specific. Because the way it looks to me, you can put a five, a sign five acres down, do not enter, I will shoot you. And they may get away with that. And I'm not condoning people trespassing. I'm just standing with decades of people before us who said, if you're going to shoot someone to death, prove that you were under risk of harm. And in your house, you don't have to prove that. But if you're out in the boonies, maybe you should prove that. Just some of that is just because I'm telling you, I can hear it in here and I can hear it from the calls I'm receiving. I want to shoot anyone. You're blocking my right to shoot people. The American Bar did a study on stand your ground laws and stand your ground laws are anywhere, not just the curtilage of your home, but anywhere. They are asking states to repeal that, to repeal their stand your ground laws because they find that they have uneven results, unpredictable, result in racial disparities. The right to self-defense was sufficiently protected. And this is also what we have heard from our public defender on previous occasions is that the right to self-defense, I'll never forget their phrase, is alive and well on Guam. And they have used it successfully. And, and I think criminal defense lawyers are very competent, able to use crim, self-defense. And I'm just, I, I feel comfortable knowing when we see somebody was shot, that they're going to have to prove that that was self-defense if it wasn't inside their home. And I'm comfortable making an exception for our homes and maybe even our porches and our outside kitchens. But I seems to go farther than that because the words are not tightly defined and they're even different how we're discussing in here than what the public defender was discussing in his testimony. He said it wouldn't even include the driveway, but there's nothing in here that limits driveways, the rest of the yards. In fact, it takes out the word yards. I mean, it changes whether yards are included or not, and now they're included. Anyways, so I just wanted to raise those concerns. Sidus Massey.
You're very welcome, Speaker Trelawney. Anyone else on the main motion? Anyone else on the main motion? Senator Joanne Brown, I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. I've certainly been listening to the discussion this morning. I think we recognize the challenges we're dealing with in our community, sad reality. You know, there was a time we used to talk about growing up. And we hear this often, you know, we didn't have to lock the doors and people were respectful. You know, if they wanted or needed something you had, it could be lemon, bananas, whatever. They'd ask because they knew who you were, you knew who they were, and it wasn't such a big deal. Nowadays, you know, the Guam we grew up in, it's very different. Nowadays, you don't know whether or not you're safe even in your home. And you see the evolution of where, you know, we build fences, we close shutters, we put in security systems, we put in cameras. You know, I've talked about this before, we're almost imprisoned. It's not the criminals that are in jail. It's the people of Guam that are in jail, particularly our elderly that stay home most of the time and fear their safety. And that's the challenge that we're dealing with this bill because I have mixed feelings. The Speaker's right. The committee report was recently circulated and I thought, gosh, why do I need to even look at the committee report? The bill's already in the agenda. It's already a reason I wouldn't want to vote for this bill because I don't like the fact how it got here. And yet here we are challenged with this. How do we deal with this? How do we balance this? How do we deal with people that because of their fear out there are armed and are waiting to find someone who might trespass on their property? And yet we have the other end of the coin, people that have been victimized on their property. You know, particularly we hear about our farmers out there. You know, that they work very hard to go and plant their crop. And then one day they show up and end up finding out that, you know, their crop's been stolen, all the time and effort that they put into their work. And here we are trying to encourage agriculture on Guam. And someone just came and walked off with it and took all their hard earned labor. And we think, oh, you know, it's just some fruits and vegetables, but you know, that translates into cash. That's what they work for. That's what they've invested their time in. How do you define that? You know, I had an incident a number of years ago, Madam Speaker, and we don't live too far from each other. We live in Pago Bay. My mom and I were outside in the yard and we have a fence. The gate at my parents' house is over five feet high. We had a young man who ran from across the street, what we call Manissa Luhon Drive, and ran across the highway, jumped over that five foot fence and went to attack my mother. And I was trying to pull this guy away from my mom. My father walked out with a gun and had to hold him at gunpoint until the police arrived. And you go, how does that happen? Well, the guy was obviously from our observation, pretty drugged out. Thank God my dad was there. Thank God my dad had a rifle. Thank God he knew how to use it. Vietnam vet. What if he hadn't been? What if it was simply me and my mother trying to fight off someone who was drugged out in our yard? Where you wouldn't think anything of it. We're just out doing yard work. So I can recognize the challenge that we are and have before us here today, having experienced that. And that's the Guam we live in today. And what do we have to do? Do we all have to arm ourselves? Do we all have to be, you know, always prepared at a moment's notice? What about the homes? People don't even have fences. They could walk up to their door, to their window. You know, a lot of elderly people talk about that, especially those that don't have younger families with them about their fear. And you know, thy respect these days, but a lot of people have no respect. They just don't. They don't recognize, hey, they can go and do whatever they want. Take whatever they want. Maseh, your bush cutter, your lawnmower, your whatever. And so that's the challenge that we have today in weighing, how do we balance this? The ability of property owners, people that also need to protect their physical health and wellbeing, protect their families, that truly in this community really are under threat. That to me is not an illusion. That is a real threat that our people almost face every single day. And as we look at the news, we look at the paper, my goodness, they might as well just put mug shots and line them up. And that's the people that they've actually caught and arrested. It's like, Maseh, if somebody breaks into your house or steals from you in your garage, why bother putting a police report? You probably never see it again. And how much do we work? How much do we lock down? You know, how many locks do we put on the door? So I, I understand both sides of this issue, at least I have a appreciation for it because anyone who's been victimized by crime or has someone close to them victimized by it, especially because of this drug issue that we have on this island where there's no boundaries anymore. There's no respect anymore. Especially for the thought that you just can't take what's not yours. And nowadays, that's normal. It's absolutely normal. You just, you know, I one time watched in Chalampago. Somebody, I guess, I don't know if they abandoned their car, they just broke down. Good Lord, if you, or your car breaks down or whatever, make sure within the hour you get it moved if you want to keep it. Pretty standard now for anybody who's ever going to go there and scavenge around that car and they're, strip it down. And there's a Guam police officer just driving right on by. Other guy's there and that's exactly what he's doing, taking it apart. So it's like, goodness, make sure you tow that car right away because it don't matter now. You leave it there a few hours and I know Speaker and I know, I, Vice Speaker, and I know if a car right now in our neighborhood, you know, I'm amazed the license plate's still on. But that's a sad reality as to why this debate has occurred this morning, that we are having to be challenged with these issues because of what's going on out there, outside the walls of this session hall. And you're right, we look outside, what another beautiful day on Guam. And yet because of the crime, because of the fear, our people have maybe some look at it that way. Yeah, maybe they're wanting to be a little trigger happy because they probably have had to deal with people stealing from them, harassing them, coming into their property and have no respect for that. I mean, if you're not on an easement, odds are fairly good you're in somebody's property and unless you know who it is and they'll be okay with you being there, you probably need to think twice about what you're doing there. So I'm challenged, Madam Speaker, because you certainly had some very, very good arguments with regards to this amendment, yet at the same time, Yet at the same time, you know, gosh, if I'm out on my front porch, if I'm out on, in this particular case of an incident that happened in my own family, in our driveway. And I watched that guy and I go, "My God, is that..." And he just jumped right over a five-foot fence. I guess he was really drugged out. What do you do in instances like that? And you, as a private citizen, a resident, just going about your business on your own private property? Now you got to justify and explain why you may have taken an action you may have taken? I wonder that day, you know, if that guy just moved the wrong way once, he probably would have been very dead. Because when you're going to protect someone you love and care about, you don't think about those things too much. You just take action when you need to. So that's the challenge and that's a sad reality. I have to save what our people are dealing with out here in our beautiful paradise. That's maybe the bigger challenges of issues of what's eroding in this community that we are faced with today, that we are even debating this bill as we are. So thank you, Madam Speaker, for the opportunity to comment.
Sidus Massey, Senator. On the bill, anyone else would like to speak on the bill?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. You know, first I want to apologize for not standing up at the very beginning when the bill was going to the second reading final to bring to the fact that this bill does not have a committee report. And it was placed on the session agenda. This is against our standing rules. This reminds me of the time last year when they bypassed, you know, the committee on the whole when it came to an appropriation. We bypassed that. And that's part of the rules. Rules are being put in place for a reason. Even individuals watching this, they know how to go on the website and look at the committee report and see what happened during this time. Right now, we would have to, you know, sitting here, right now, we would have to go back and forth to the website, the YouTube channel, try to listen, try to hear what we're talking about in the session about a bill that is so important, that deals with the death of an individual and how an individual will get, you know, through immunity charges and how the defense has to be the one to show the burden with regards to this. I mean, this is pretty important stuff for us to have this bill being discussed on the floor without a committee report. And even for those who are listening. So I'm very upset with this. And probably the reason, you know, if I, if I vote on this, whether I vote no or yes on it, it's definitely because there is no committee report. I've been a big stickler about this. Putting bills on the agenda that don't meet the five-day open government law? Nobody here is practicing transparency. Next time I hear somebody put out the word transparency, I'll find out if that person was the one that voted for this bill to get on the session agenda without a committee report. Let me remind you. You're the biggest culprit in not providing transparency. It's very frustrating. This bill is an important bill. You know, I have no problems, you know, I know how to shoot a gun. I go to the practicing range to practice. I've encouraged my friends who live alone that if you live alone, you should have some protection. Someone breaks in your home, and we have, this is, Madam Speaker, this bill has already been passed, a similar bill like this, for when you're in the home. But this is so, you know, I mean, when it comes to outside areas, you know, that is bigger than just, you know, somebody walking into your home. The boundaries, I mean, questions that were brought up earlier. And again, I apologize, I should have just made an objection. So right now, I lost that opportunity. A lot of questions were asked, answered. People spoke on the bill, amendments were made. At this point, Madam Speaker, I'd like to motion that this bill be placed back to the committee and wait for a committee report.
On that, on that motion to refer the bill back to committee, all in favor, please raise your hand. Motion fails. Order, please, Senator. Senator Taitegui, you still have the floor.
Thank you, thank you. I see the author came running in, you know, at that, at that hour. But it's still, you know, it's very shameful that this bill was on the session floor without a committee report. And we're not following our own rules, our own rules here. Someone mentioned earlier this, the Wild, Wild West, or to me, this is like jungle rules. There's no discipline in this body. And if we're, if we're passing bills like this, then there should be some discipline in this body. Follow our own rules, not jungle rules. Now this body becomes the Wild, Wild West. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Senator, on the bill. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on the bill? If not, then sponsor me, close on the bill.
Madam Speaker, this time I'd like to recess until 2:00.
Please close on the bill, Senator.
I'd like to make a motion to recess until 2:00. I withdraw my motion. I'll go ahead and finish. Castle doctrine. This bill, as passed by previous senator in the previous term, was introduced and passed as an effort to help protect the individuals who are protecting themselves. The impetus for this bill started with a case where an incident started in the home. Somebody was in their home protecting themselves. And the altercation spilled in to the outside, into a garage, into a porch. And even though he started defending himself inside their home with legal protections of castle doctrine, by that fight, moving just a few feet outside their home, they lost all those legal protections. And that is not right. That does not serve the needs of justice. That does not serve our community. And all it did was muddy the water for people who are well-intentioned in trying to protect their family, their home, and their community. We talk about crime, crime, safety. People don't feel safe in their homes. This is the number one issue people care about, crime. We love to talk about how big a problem it is. But now that we're here, very close to a position to effectuate change with a simple yea or nay, we choose to hide behind language, mealy-mouthed language about committee reports. And I don't, I like this bill, but I don't like the manner in which it got here. As legislatures, as elected officials, we use every tool at our disposal to effectuate the change and the policies that we promised our constituents, that we promised ourselves. And I did everything in my power to get this to this point right now. But we're not all the way there. We still got to vote it up or down in the third reading. People often pray for something or someone to save them from this rise in crime, from this feeling of discomfort and feeling unsafe in our communities, in our home. But I'm here to tell the people, our prayers have been answered because our good Lord gave us the means to protect ourselves. And we just need to not be in the way. So I ask my colleagues to support me, an expansion of the castle doctrine, so that we could better protect our citizens and our families and our communities, not by growing government, but by empowering the individual to save themselves. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to add this bill to the third reading. And with that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
On the motion to place the bill, number 260-37, I'm sorry, bill number 39-37 COR, as amended on the floor to the third reading. Is there any objection? There's an objection. All in favor of moving to third reading, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. One, two, three, four, five. Seven, motion fails. All right, we'll now recess until 2:00 PM.